All right, call this meeting to order.
It's back to you.
Thank you. So the first thing we need to do is elect a chair for this year. So we'll ask for nominations.
Alvin, any thoughts?
I'm new to the game.
I'm gonna repeat my nomination of last year. You've done a fine job. You've got a good voice for the board. Do your homework and speak well, so.
Thank you.
Say if you're okay with accepting a nomination, I would nominate.
Second?
Second.
All right, nomination of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
That was easy.
Yep. All right, why don't we move on to department heads? Sam, do you wanna kick us out?
Sure. Good job. Unpaid receivables as of this afternoon. Nothing out of the ordinary. There's a current used change tax on the second page that we drew back in February that he's paying off in portions.
Okay.
So that's not been released because he hasn't paid it off in the form.
Which, how do we know which one that is in there?
Understood.
The very last one, twenty-five U.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Deals are gonna go out Thursday for leaning, notices for leaning.
Okay. Yeah.
Gonna go out on Thursday, and that's gonna initiate the actual leaning process.
Yeah.
And that's no, no more than expected or?
Um, there's two or three people on here. Um, Bueller Fellowship isn't usually on here.
Yeah.
Because of, but they have not contacted us. Um. Nobody, uh, Liberty Utilities usually pays up, but on the first half of twenty-four, but their payment never arrived, so.
Hmm.
Um, what else?
Not much.
Well, yeah, they paid the principal, that's just the interest they had paid, so.
Oh, yeah, huh. What else?
Nobody else really out of the ordinary.
Okay. And these, which are the ones that are going to go out for lean, the one at the very top?
Twenty-two, twenty-four, P-one and P-two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Money for the voting machine is approved at town meetings. You'll see that bill come through probably at the April meeting,
Yeah.
and town meeting minutes will also be coming through
Very good.
for your approval to get those done.
Yeah. Um, the machines are available, sir.
Very good.
Just hoping you would say that and get that done and, okay. Questions for Sam? Okay. Thank you, Sam.
How you doing?
Chief Clardy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just so you know, chief, when you pull in behind being in the parking lot like that, I totally almost T-boned your car on the way out because it's black and I didn't see it, and I thought at the last second, oh!
That would be embarrassing.
That would be very embarrassing, so just so you know.
I'm gonna stand because I don't fit in those chairs.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Bye. Okay. Uh, so from February eighteenth to March sixteenth, we had attendance in reports. Uh, Kevin, just so you know, that's full reports of typed up narratives, everything. That's not just incidents that we get, so that's a full-blown reports. Uh, we had three arrests, five accidents, forty-three citations, and three hundred and ninety-five calls for service, and we had state police assistance on three calls.
Oh, okay.
Okay, three calls?
The calls for service are down. We're actually higher than we were this time last year.
Yep.
But this time of year, they kinda slowed down when it's cold outside.
Yep.
And were the accidents okay, everything ended up well, or?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Always good to know.
Yeah.
Great.
Questions for the chief?
Questions for us? Well then, I guess we're good.
You guys don't need to.
We do not, no.
Oh, no, thank you, chief.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thanks, good day. Chief Gamache, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will sit down, so I fit in those chairs, I won't sit here again.
No, you don't have to.
Well, chief Clardy always has to sit like this because he doesn't want to do equipment, so he can't do it.
Yeah, I got him and all that stuff, yeah. Hey, Ken, hope you're feeling better. Okay, we're gonna start right from the top here.
Yeah, okay.
Well, right on par with last year, which was our biggest year yet, a little over one emergency call a day, we're at eighty-two. No work in the incidents since the last time we met was, um, I, I was, I'm working with the state police, they reached out for information. We had an accident on the highway on January thirty-first. Um, serious injuries to an elderly male, ended up being fatal, he ended up dying about a month after, so I'm working on getting that information. And a couple weeks ago, they had on one of six, was actually mowed in, but we were called to assist. Um, that was a pretty violent accident, so we anticipated that. Um, but all the rest were kind of routine medical calls, medical and fire calls, so. Fire prevention, uh, two weeks ago, I met with the new director, or the newer director of Shakka Village, it was a really productive meeting for both of us. We exchanged, uh, contact information, cell phones, all that stuff. This plan is moving forward in late spring to basically exercise their water system.
Yes.
It was brought to my attention, and I wasn't aware, because I never seen a document that, um, uh, actually Kent shared with me, that, um, uh, we can use that water system in, I think it agreed when we signed in two thousand seventeen, and moved the town, giving them some assistance on a project. Uh, we can use the water system for a fire in that area, so it'll make the project a little easier. The system has been exercised, really, since the new pump was installed several years ago, has been exercised since two thousand seventeen, and I'm aware of it. So we have a drill plan for May. The, um, the director wants to kind of come with us and do it, she's very interested, and we're gonna build off of that, so. We're gonna try to work with her and keep lines of communication open, and it was actually a productive meeting.
Yeah.
Great.
Membership ceremony, I'm always searching for ways, low-cost ways to keep the volunteers motivated, and so your, your support, uh, on something like that is really, really important. Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Nice ceremony.
That was a very nice ceremony, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. And then, uh, under the last section, we had two ma- two major breakdowns from our newest engine in the last couple of months. Uh, cost us a lot of money, but we're gonna remain grounded for that. Uh, one was the, um, the thing that gives you pressure for the water, we called it the, um, um, uh, the throttle on the pump side. Another one of our onspots, uh, which our, our snow chains, uh, weren't releasing, weren't going down, weren't working, so. Those are fixed, those are, those are wear items, uh, so nothing to be totally alarmed about. We got our annual water, firewatering last week. Expect a pretty active season this year. We're ready for brush season, we put everything in service today. Uh, our forestry is ready to go, because we de- we decommissioned that and transferred that to a pot truck in the winter. Now it's all set to go, we're gonna have brush fires. Permits are not required, stay on, on, basically statewide if you wanna have anything outside permit, so.
Somebody was saying the other night that they could burn because it was after dusk, and I was like, I don't think that's.
With a permit, with a permit, you can burn after five.
With a permit, okay, I was like.
You can burn after five, even with a.
I don't think the darkness makes the fire burn.
Even with a permit, you can't burn during the day.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so. And permits, uh, you know, I'm gonna put it out there on our social media, but they can be done online in the company at your home, it's like a three-dollar convenience for you to do it online. But the community station will manually write one if we're there, and that's no charge.
Our, our permit, you're issuing permits now, burn permits, is this when it starts?
Yes, we are.
Did you say, I haven't checked the newsletter stuff yet, have you sent that to me?
I, I have not, I sent an announcement on Pancake Breakfast, but I can, I can put the, I probably should put another one.
Yes, please.
As far as the permits, yes, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's your one, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Uh, self-storage on Hall Road, the expansion is complete, the alarm system's all been installed, so now there's, on the left side, the RV storage is five buildings, and on the right side, it's, is additional five, so, uh, they're up and running. Um, it hasn't been a straight road to get where I want it with them, but we're finally, we did contact information keys, all that stuff, so things are good down there.
So this is the, the place that's been having the issue with the?
Yeah, yeah, they've been better as of, um, the last three, four months, so.
That is good.
Put a little pressure on it. Yeah. We participated in the services for the concrete firefighter who passed away last week, uh, and offered to cover this, I should, I offered the covers of battalion chief. Uh, they never end up using our covered services, but, uh, several of our members participated in the services for that firefighter. The Pickard Road hydrant down by New Road is gonna be installed sometime, probably late spring, early summer, it's a little bit too wet down there right now, but at the beginning of last year, I asked you for an extra five thousand to basically pay for that project, and you put it on the back burner for obvious reasons, you had other competing interests for money. I was able to find end-of-year budget money to pay for that on my budget, so, uh, this.
Even without the budget cut?
Even with the budget, last year, yes.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, a new reporting platform, national reporting platform is rolling out in fall two thousand twenty-five, so I'm working with the state on that project. Uh, Canterbury Elementary did all their security upgrades, um, basically, just, they came to me with an application three years ago, we had some input in that. Um, the final, it's been installed. Uh, I'm meeting with them next week to basically, you know, if there was an emergency there, a mass emergency, that we got access to wherever we want to in the school, so I'm meeting with their, their director next week and the principal to kind of get everything for the fire department.
Okay, great.
Uh, Pancake Breakfast, again, is our only fundraiser of the year for the firefighter association, is, uh, the last Saturday, and, um, last Saturday in April. Um, the notice is going out in the newsletter, I mean, notice posted at the store, so it was a good event the last couple years, it's our third year. Lieutenant Evan Hoffman is the one who basically drives this bus, um, with many participating members, so hopefully you can make it, pencil that in your calendar. And tomorrow morning, we are hosting the chief's monthly roundtable, basically chiefs of the whole contact area, fire marshal, homeland security director, uh, the, um, you know, muffins, eggs, and all that stuff, so we're hosting that tomorrow.
Great.
Yep, so that's it.
Uh, two things.
Yeah.
One, when you put up your sign for Pancake Breakfast this year, would you make sure whoever puts it up latches it down so it doesn't go blowing up Appleboro Road like it did last year?
I would agree with that.
That was a.
So it's still in the newsletter, it's gonna go on our social media site, and then I'll, I will send you a email about, um, the permits, yeah.
Yes. Yes, please, and, um, ask her, um, what's the story with the, um, the Smokey the Bear sign?
Yeah, well, that's on our list.
I know.
That's on our list.
Thank you.
We plan to take it down this winter and is, and kind of work on it, but, um, yeah, so we have the, the, um, the, the replacement for it.
Right.
We're just gonna do it, yeah.
I'll, I'll go up there and ask her.
Come on, I'm, I'm, I'll put you to work.
Thank you, thank you. And your next, um, training is next Monday?
Tonight and next Monday, yes.
Next Monday, right.
Every Monday.
So if I call up, I can talk to you about maybe coming to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Great.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You know, later. Well, good, good, thank you.
Mrs. Baker?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Welcome, Pat. Congratulations and welcome. Um, I will, I say this initiation for all of the select board members, um, I do have all the information needed, um, busy, rather, video on YouTube. So I'll send you the link on that, which explains library governance and saving the future and how it works, um, whatever it may consist of. But yet, I appear as a courtesy and a community collateral to the select board. You'll find that most of what I will go to report is about the outside of the building, so it can always sound a little strange because I'm just talking about the outside of the building, but that's really the only thing that the town will cover on that. So, um, I like to preface it that way because it sounds like all I care about are gutters, which you know that is not, you know that is not true. So anyway, I'll send you that, uh, it's just a little crash course in, in how it all works.
Good evening.
Uh, great job on Friday, and that was a beautiful special weekend. Um, when last we spoke, um, attention was needed, I was really looking at the concrete pad in terms of the trip hazard.
Remember the internet?
Yeah, and I think, um, at this point, it's become quite a trip hazard, but I think we're at the point where we could just use a little warning tape or a little warning paint, um, so I was just gonna call John and see if that was something he could do that, I'm not entirely sure if that's gonna really help, um, I might just put a cone on it, but it is starting to rise, and we've got some cracking, so concrete, and it's going, so.
Yes, it is.
So not sure that was the, the greatest, but what, what can you do? I mean, we might need to pull it out and do a full paint path, probably, um.
Is that a separate stone there, or is that all one piece of concrete with the little?
It's concrete poured, so it's in sections. I don't know why it was ever concrete and not a tarred path, I'm not, not sure.
No. Because it's. To be, to be continued.
To be continued, it is twenty-one years old this year.
I know.
Um, Sergeant Johnson is, can this, there's, um, Sergeant Johnson, uh, from Remapure Corrections, um, contacted me, um, and I don't know if he contacted Ken, maybe? Ken, I'm running, I think I'm, I'm a little bit here.
Ken, you're, you're muted, don't even.
Oh, yeah, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay. So he called me, and I, I felt like I was his only point of contact, um, so I said I would gladly, um, take up the lead on that. Uh, Sergeant Johnson is from the Remapure Department of Corrections, and he's usually the one who orchestrates, um, the prisoners to come out and do assorted work. Um, so he has asked me to contact you, Ken, which I just haven't had the chance to do, about possible maintenance things. Um, as much as I don't wanna paint the outside, I think we're okay without painting the outside, but my trim needs a little attention.
The doors.
The doors need attention, um, I need probably a power washing wouldn't hurt. So, um, I wonder if Ken, you could just circulate that around to the other departments and see if there's anything, and then I can work with Sergeant Johnson to, um, orchestrate that, get some digits.
Sure.
Great.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, I'm happy to do that. Um, uh, and the back gutter, thank you, um, Peter Gladys, always the best, um, came, took it off. What happened was my gutter filled with ice, which would lead me to believe that I had a short in my heat tape. Um, I would only, I mean, it had heat line in it, so I would only imagine it didn't work and/or it was just too much ice at the time, and the whole gutter fell off the back of the building. So thank you, Ken, um, Ken called Peter Gladys, and comes rather quickly and efficiently, um, to remove it, and then I think you and I will discuss Ken later, uh, replacement on that.
Yes, yep.
It didn't ding your new thing, did it?
It didn't ding my, anything, it just kept crashing down, and the, and the cones are still there, just because it's a little wet for height.
It, uh, it did shut the power off to your solar panels, though.
I'll hit the disconnect.
Hmm.
That, that's why the pan, the solar panels weren't working.
You see my mouth gaping?
Geek-worthy conversation.
That's why.
Yes, so Jim Snyder came up and found the problem and took care of it.
Yeah, and I was a little cranky because he just came in, it was busy, and he said, why did you turn the power off? Is he replacing the furnace filter? I don't know. Well, answer a great number of things.
Yes. Put that on the list of things to check regularly, or disconnect.
Thank you.
Right.
Main power disconnect.
Because you have.
Duty is not assigned. Okay, so anyway, thank you. And, uh, that is all I have for this evening, I'm about to meet with my trustees, um, very excited and thankful to Tom and Cheryl Franco and, uh, Community Power Gang.
Yeah.
That was beautiful, I had a whole spiel ready to go, but just didn't feel like I needed it. Um, and I'm meeting tonight with a representative from, uh, Ultra Geothermal, um, who is gonna explain different heating, uh, options to my trustees, uh, just because we need to have a little bit better understanding of what's available. Um, I haven't signed anything certainly with Geothermal, um, but I do have two brands currently pending right now, um, that I'm hopeful for, um, but I'm always hopeful for a brand, but, um, this would be for heating systems.
But you haven't decided on, um, J- Formal, you're still, that's still one of several.
We have. It's one of several, and it's one of several companies that I've talked to, just this particular salesman was the most comprehensive, gave me the most comprehensive audit, gave me the most information, um.
What was the company again, Rachel, please?
Ultra Geothermal, and they're from Barrington. Um, and Parker's gonna come up because my trustees just wanted a little bit better explanation on what geothermal was versus heat pumps, um, versus air cooling, versus ground cooling. So we're gonna hear from him tonight at our trustees meeting. Um, oh, the other thing was, to answer the question about the trustees of the trust fund, um, Ken and I talked about it, and I need to find the specifics of that particular trust, um, to figure out the mechanism by which, um, to get those dividends that had gone to the trustee of trust fund meeting, and Ken and I got together on that, so I am working on that. I am gonna ask the trustees tonight, as it is their decision, what to do with that, those funds.
But didn't, we, we signed it so you could get them?
You may have, I don't know.
I think we did.
I think we did, too, yeah.
Okay.
So I just have to put it before the trust, uh, before the executives.
Oh, you need to find out what you can actually use those for, if they're restricted in any way, okay.
Right, because I can't. Well, and I can't handle any money.
Okay.
Right, so the board of trustees would have to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Thanks, so, thank you. Good, good to, good that you're getting your, your bucks, the money from the trustees.
Helpful, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Ken.
Hey, Ken, I'm thinking, I see Mr. Booth has joined us.
Yes.
Mr. Booth, can you hear me okay?
Uh, sorry, who, who are you asking for?
You.
Ah, me, okay. Yes, hi, now I do hear you, thank you.
Right, you're welcome. So I, I figure since you're this early, we're going to.
Okay.
We'll take you out of order so that you don't have to sit here for forty-five minutes and.
Okay.
So, um, can you hear Ken Folsom, who's also, uh, online with you?
Yes, I was able to hear Ken.
Very good.
Hi, David.
Hi.
Do you want to tell me?
And, and I have, my wife is here with me next to me, she's ten years, anyway, oh, you can see her a little bit.
I am.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Ken, can you sort of lay out the, um, what we're up?
Sure, sure, so, um, uh, Mr. Booth owns the property behind the municipal building, and, uh, when the town bought that property, uh, that municipal building is on, there was a right-of-way, um, and, uh, I guess some paperwork was done, and it looked like the right-of-way, from the town's perspective, the right-of-way was no longer there. But, uh, Mr. Booth pointed out and then reviewed a bunch of deeds and everything, and it looks like the right-of-way was still a viable right-of-way. Um, so, Mr. Booth owns the little sliver of land between the, um, municipal building and, uh, Lenny Kudaski's property next door. Um, and he was hoping to get some kind of access to his property that way. Um, we put together, um, a map and diagram that shows how much property is there, and, um, so, I guess at this point, it's up to you guys to talk to Mr. Booth and figure out how you wanna move forward with this.
So Mr. Booth is looking, how, could I have that, just the top part, yeah? So, um, in looking at the, um, drawing, which I'm, I'm not sure, Ken, does Mr. Booth have, have this?
Yes.
So as, as you can see, we can't do fifty feet for the entire length of the, uh, property. It narrows down going toward your property.
Yeah, can you, um, so what, what, what was the reason why it can't? Can you just refresh me? It's been a couple weeks since I saw that, so.
Yes, so, I, I sent you that diagram that shows that the property line between, uh, Lenny's property and the town property, that sliver of land, uh, that goes through where the Snowville Trail is, um, up by where the building is, there's propane tanks and then asphalt, uh, the part of the driveway, and it's only, I think, thirty-four feet wide at that point from, if you went from Lenny's, Lenny's property right to the propane tanks or to the, to the hot-top driveway. So it narrows down. Up towards the road, there's, there is space, but, uh, as you get further back off the, off of Baptist Road, you can see where the propane tanks and then the, and the underground propane tanks, and then the hot-top, uh, uh, goes towards the east, uh, over towards your property, and, and it's only about thirty-four feet from Lenny's property over to where the hot-top and the propane tanks are.
Right, so are, are the, could the propane tanks be moved? I mean, are those, uh?
Well, I'm sure they could, I would, I'm guessing it would be, you know, quite a considerable cost, and, and I don't know where they'd have to put them, um. You know, everything's underground there, so all the lines run underground to the building and all that, so.
I see, yeah.
Quite a, quite a, uh, task.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, okay, right, so, and, and I don't, I don't know, uh, if, if, I don't know how much background other, others on this call know about it, but this is, this is something that only came to my attention about two or three years ago when I was researching a, a completely unrelated boundary issue on a different part of my property, and I superimposed multiple surveys on top of each other and the tax map, and that's when I noticed the issue. Um, but, um, so that, that's just background, but anyway. Um, my goal is to, is to get access to that back, and the, the idea that, uh, that Ken is alluding to was one idea I had was given that I do own that lane there that's between, uh, Mordarsky and the, and the town's property, um, you know, I, I was thinking, maybe I could exchange, do a boundary adjustment that would, that would ensure that that lane is a full fifty feet wide all the way back to mine, and in exchange, I would give the town like an equal amount of land in the back, um, you know, in exchange. So, you, you, Ken's pointing out that there would be an issue, yeah, e- even in doing that in terms of running into those propane tanks. The, uh, the, what did you say, the, the black top, the black top doesn't?
Yep. Yeah, the, the, on that diagram, you'll see where the, the black top from the driveway is, is only thirty-four feet from, I think it's thirty-four feet from, uh, from Lenny's over to, to the black top, so.
That's a difference.
This is, there isn't fifty feet there either.
Okay, um.
Two that I see, there's a utility pole in that southwest part at twenty-eight feet.
Right.
Ah, utility pole, that sounds like a.
And that's the utility pole that brings the power into the building, so it's overhead from the road to that pole, and then everything's underground from there into the building, so that's another obstacle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay, well, um, I mean, I'm just trying to brainstorm here, um, you know, what might be the simplest solution or something. Uh, so I'm open to other ideas as well. Uh, it is important to me to, to have access to the back, um, I don't have any current plans uh, to, you know, for development back there, but I, I do, it is important to me to leave that option open.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah.
It's against a fifty feet, is, was it a, I, I glanced at these deeds, is there an established fifty feet in any of those deeds in, in a reference in, in the previous right-of-way?
There, there was, it went through that property where the municipal building is now.
I was just curious as to.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of right-of-ways, if, you know, if they reference a skidder road or a logging road, Woods Road, are only twenty, twenty-five feet wide, so I just didn't see the, the fifty foot reference.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's a lot of material to.
Well, that's a big road, I mean, that's fifty feet's a big, big road.
Yes, it is.
Well, and that's, and that was my question too, is it fifty feet, does it need to be a fifty-foot right-of-way to put a road into the back? Or does it only need to be big enough to access if you wanted to put one house back there, or maybe a shared driveway for two houses? Why fifty feet? Um, and I was reading through the, um, information we got several, um, meetings ago that back in twenty-twenty-three, there was a lot of discussion about whether that fifty feet was actually correct. So I don't know.
Yeah.
Never gets decided.
Yeah, so in terms of the question about why fifty feet, my understanding is that fifty feet is the requirement, um, for the width of that's, I, I don't know if it's, I think it's a state requirement or something like that, uh, for the width of a driveway, if it is going to go, if a driveway would be put in to go back there to become a road eventually to multiple, uh, houses, for example. Um, and in terms of the question of how Um, and in terms of the question of how wide that lane is, that is a discrepancy between some of the deeds. The deed that I have says that it is fifty feet. Um, but the survey that was done for the town indicates that it starts at fifty feet at Baptist Road, but then by the time you get back there farther, it's narrower, so that is a discrepancy between the deeds.
Is fifty feet a frontage restriction in terms of being able to put a road in? Because, I mean, I live on a class-six road, and my road is only twenty feet wide, for instance, so is there a way to compromise with fifty feet of frontage and have it progress to that thirty feet or thirty-five feet and still have the access you want without having to move utilities, propane, walls, et cetera?
My, my understanding is that that is not allowed, that if, if it were ever to become a road, it would have to have fifty feet.
Okay, and actually, um, David, you can't see him, but the road agent is under the screen here in the room, and he's nodding his head that you are correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They're like, I can't see you, John.
Right, he can hear you, so. So, really, we narrow, the narrow west is twenty-eight feet.
Right.
So, do we still have to deal with that discrepancy? It's never been cleared up?
The deed discrepancy?
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you that, that from the town's perspective, what I was told was that the town believe, or the, no. The surveyor that the town used was convinced that his survey was correct. And that his interpretation of the deeds was correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, that, that is, yeah, but it's never been adjudicated, let me put it that way. Yeah. Another, I, I don't know if this is another, if this is an option at all or not, but another possibility that came to my mind, and this, this would have, well. I would, it would also be fine with me if Lenny Mordarsky would want to do the same kind of swap of, I could give him additional land in the back in exchange for additional, that part on, on his side of it. But of course, that, you know, that's not the town's business to decide, but I'm just mentioning it because, you know, from my perspective, that would be another solution, you know.
Ken, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at this point, you know, it might probably be in the town's best interest to contact Lenny and, and see if we can, you know, all get together and sit down at the table and, and try and figure something out that, that makes everybody happy, I guess would be the best way to do it. I think, I think everybody's end goal is to, to not end up in court over this. And, and, you know, maybe we could, could all sit down and, and look at the maps and look at the deeds and try and figure out what's a, what's a good, uh, compromise on all this.
Mr. Booth, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally open to, yeah.
Why don't, why don't we investigate that, um, and, and see what happens, I mean, all we can do is ask.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as long as you're okay with us, um, approaching via butter, um.
Yeah, that's fine with me, yep, totally fine with me.
Just want to make sure, and, um, and then we'll, we'll see what he says and go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Mr. Booth, anything else from you?
No, I don't think so, um, you know, I, I also just want to, you know, say thank you, uh, for, you know, taking the time to discuss this, um, and for all the work you do. Um, and if anybody has any other ideas, uh, creative ideas, I, you know, I'm open to other ideas as well, so, but this sounds like a good thing to ask, so, yeah.
All right.
I, I think that's a good idea worth pursuing, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Ken, um, what do we think, um, you're, I know you're out for the, probably what, next week or so, right?
Yep, so I'll, I'll, uh, I'll get ahold of Lenny and, and see if we can have him come in, I'll explain everything to him, uh, when I get back to work and, and, uh, it'll be a couple of weeks, and then, then, uh, I'll probably talk to you, Dave, and let you know that I've made contact with him and, and, uh, see if there's any room for, for negotiations over this.
Sounds good.
All right.
Are we going to look at talking again in, like, the end of April, or is this going to go into?
Yeah, I would, I would say at least the, a month out, the, the second meeting in April would be something we could shoot for anyway.
So, that's the twenty-first.
Yep.
Sounds like a plan, all right.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, um, John, you want to join us? You know, the other department said, heads have come and gone, so.
While, while John is getting organized, is it, is it appropriate for the town to approach Lenny as opposed to?
Yeah, I, I think at least we can explain the situation. I think if we explain the situation and then see if he's open to any negotiations, at least, you know, we could, we could do that, and then, if there's any negotiations between him and Mr. Booth, and they would have to do it on their own, the town wouldn't be involved with that, so.
Asking, acting more in this instance like we were for Lightford Pond to get the.
Correct, yeah, yep.
Uh, not actually. Okay, all right.
Correct, uh, the narrowest.
Yeah, sixteen feet at the corner.
Well, I would, I would also hazard to just. Say while I'm thinking of it, that I'm not sure, from the town's point, an equal swap of land for land is, is what we're looking for, but I don't know how to just, how to discuss that because of the, the value of being able to get to that property is more than.
And that, that may be part of negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think he'd be looking at, um, let's see, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, forty-eight, or twenty-two feet, I think it narrows to twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's thirty-four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just if we're looking for me for salt chip.
Yeah, well, that's what, I think what Ken's thinking too, is if we get a strip in the back.
Right.
Okay.
So, I, I think we're all sort of thinking the same thing.
All right, so pencil that in, him in for somewhere in April, like this, like the twenty-first, okay.
Sounds good. John?
I guess, John?
We have my favorite international back in the shed. If you look at the budget, you'll see that we're now up to twenty grand so far this year on repairs. But at least that one's running.
Is that the one that had to go all the way back down to Manchester?
Uh, three times. The other international, T-one, the older one, is, uh, waiting for the wrecker when we get it stripped down, because it will not start. It's where the other one started. Most of the roads, three-five, three-six, you all mentioned that, so that mud is here. We've added stone to some of the roads. This rain has really helped, it's driving it right out with good old frost. I had to spend time thawing culverts, haven't had to do that for some years. So, thank you for letting us buy the steep, uh, the pressure washer last year.
Yeah, I hope that helped a lot, so.
It certainly did.
Cool.
And we had a nice windstorm, you had five, six roads closed at one time. Few trees down.
Yep.
Um, I received a call from Innerville Road, they would like a pine tree taken down. It's actually in the Sistern area.
Okay.
Piece. Um, when you mentioned it was the town land, I said, oh, now, now I'll take a look at it, I was thinking, man.
So, Sistern side?
Does.
On the same side?
On the same side, yeah, it's pretty close to Scotty's.
Yep.
Line, but, uh, I said, I'll take it down and just leave it in the woods, the woodpeckers have got a lot of holes in it.
Yeah.
So, that one I'll take down. Um, I received a call from Lamprey Road, the big bull pine by York's, she would like that down, and I said, I'm not touching that tree.
Is it as big as the one they took down across the street at Antelope Lampreys?
It's bigger.
Because that thing was huge, oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, the big one that leans.
Yeah, yeah.
She's concerned it's gonna enter a house, but, um, been up there a lot of years, still got life in it.
At what point does it become the town's responsibility to do that, take it down?
Is it the town's responsibility, or is it the landowners on that side of the roads?
Yeah.
Tree. I mean, I deal with it when they're on the ground. And it's been pretty much the board's choice that I don't cut trees. That pretty much clears my sheet, if you have questions for me.
I do have two, um, what does one do with, I tried to go up Hackleboro the other day, and down by the sugar house there is a little dicey, does, is anything?
It's getting soft, and they're gonna add some stone to that area tomorrow.
Oh, that, that stone will go in there, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, and, um, the tree, the limbs that are all down in the center around the one tree by the gazebo, is that on your?
It's, it's, it's on, uh, the one we have time list.
If I got to it first, would that be okay, by you and by the town? If I took the, if I put the wood in the back of my car so you wouldn't have to?
I wouldn't.
Town has got something she's trying to say.
Remember, would you like, oh, yes.
I talked about that.
I wouldn't want you to do that, we'll get, we'll get it.
I want to burn it, I, that's not that, I'm trying to make it your job easier or anything, I selfishly welcome it.
Well, John, we want to get, is it okay, let's.
Sure, please.
Okay, yeah, no, the volunteer group, I, I wasn't able to help last year, but we want to get back to helping in the center and cleaning up, and I kind of had that on my list too, so I guess it's whoever gets there first.
There you go.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
And Bowden came back for spring break and, uh, helping out at the transfer station, so. He said, anytime he wants to spend hours there, have at it.
Yeah, exactly.
And anybody else.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
And sorry for being late, Carter Hill was misbehaving.
No worries, you're a busy guy, so.
I think, I think both Charlie and Donna came to listen to Mr. Booth.
Oh, too late.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
So, this, Mr. Booth signed out very early, and we took him out of order, so, um. John, you're set?
I'm set.
Okay, so for both of you, where we left it is we're going to approach the butter. Um, because the, it'll be easier actually if we show you the photo that's in the folder, Beth, if you could grab that. So, the right-of-way narrows to twenty-eight feet, and we want to give utility poles, so, and it, um, it widens out a little bit to thirty-four feet. So, um.
Do you want to come down first?
Sure.
Yeah.
We got both of you, so we're like.
I know Donna. Chris.
What?
Charlie Comey.
Oh, Charlie, sorry.
All right, so this one's the, that was, are the house next to him, or is it? That's one of his names, right, I know the name, Charles, but I don't know the name.
Really, they're getting there.
And his wife, Erica.
I don't know if you're aware, but the water line swings out around those propane tanks, and comes down that side too.
Nope, we certainly weren't.
Thank you, John.
Definitely, Ken, did you hear that?
I did, thank you.
So, what, can you give us some more background on like what's happening with this part?
So, at this point, we're going to approach the butter that's on the, losing my directions, but on.
East.
I, I can't tell that much you're pointing at, yeah.
Yeah, so the east would be the opposite side of.
Okay, see if he would be amenable to also a swap of land. So, it would increase to the fifty-foot minimum that's needed and give him some more land in the back. But we don't know yet if he's even willing to discuss that, so it's just a thought.
And the, because the town is amenable to a swap of some sort?
Yes.
And what is he wanting to develop in that?
At this point, he says he has no place to develop anything, but he does want to leave himself open for a, a potential future project.
Well, could be accepted or denied, right?
That would be up to the planning.
Right.
So, but yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
And Donna, my memory is twenty, maybe seventeen or eighteen, I believe he approached the planning board. And wanted to do would be your residents, I think, your oldest strip there to access his property.
That was farther down, it's at the crest where it thumps down now.
Oh, that's right, because there was a problem with the state in the, in the line of sight, yeah, so they would not grant him access there.
Wait, I'm saying, wouldn't grant him access across from the transfer station?
I'm sorry.
Where's the location that they wouldn't grant those?
Just, it would be to the west of the, uh, public safety center. What's the, the people that live on the farm right next door to the public safety center, just downhill from that?
Yeah, yeah, right, so at Six Baptist Road, which is the old farm.
Okay. You're gonna take your word for the house number, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what, just out of curiosity, what, what is the swap?
So, at this point, there is no swap, the proposed swap would be the swap there plus enough land to make it a fifty-foot wide, which is required for the right-of-way. But once again, that's a private landowner, so that would be up to him if he wanted to entertain that or not.
Oh, I see, but the town is not swapping anything for it.
Not, we're not doing anything.
I misunderstood, okay, I understand, so the town can't do anything, but this owner here is in the east.
Right, he would have to.
It's up to them what they would like to do.
Well, yeah, and at that point, it would essentially become a three-way swap. The town would get property in the back of the municipal center in exchange for our pieces, that narrow pie-shaped is town property. So, but he would have to also.
This is town property?
Bring it up here, so I can see what you're looking at. I'm old and my eyes aren't that great. All right, so this is town property.
Right.
This narrow strip, so the problem is, utility pole here narrows to twenty-eight feet, and then there are underground propane tanks here at thirty, thirty-four feet. So, the idea is.
And we just heard the water line.
Correct, and the water line, wherever that is now. So, the idea is we create fifty feet all the way back by going onto Lenny's property. In exchange, Lenny would get a strip here, we would get a strip somewhere back here in exchange for.
I see, but the way that this map looks, it looks like this is contiguous with his property, not, doesn't belong to the town, but you're telling me that this does.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, but this part would need to be, but this, but that's all under, I mean, none of that has been determined or, you know, we're, we're going to figure it out and try and meet.
This red line over is town property.
Is he approaching the neighbor, or is it the town's?
This line.
This line over town property.
Ken will approach Lenny and just try and, uh, kind of like we did with Lightford Pond, trying to get everybody in the same room at the same time to not go to the right-of-way.
Is, we've got fifty feet here, which is required.
Is the plan.
But we don't, when we get down to this utility.
But conversations are just.
And we don't get what the underground propane tanks are. So, obviously, moving the utility pole and underground tanks and now a water line is going to be very costly.
Okay, wasn't there a, a, a right-of-way that Booth?
That's the issue, the right-of-way, as I understand it, goes somewhere like here.
Oh, okay.
That's obviously.
Yeah, the, the, Scott, the, the, uh, right-of-way went down where, close where the existing driveway is now to the safety complex. And if you look at the maps, it would run almost right through the building itself, that was the old right-of-way.
Right, yeah, but the town owns the land, so you'd have to have two parties, other than the booths, who, you know, wanted to make some sort of swap. One is the neighbors to the east, and the other one is the town.
You, you are correct, that's, that's absolutely correct, yep. Yeah.
And you guys haven't deliberated about your attitude toward the project, that's the thing they're putting.
So, at this point. So at this point, there is no project.
I understand though, yeah, okay.
So, so nothing, this would, so if.
That just comes later because first he's.
Right, and, and it actually is not a select board function, it's a planning board function.
I see.
So it appears for them first, it'd have to be publicly noticed, so. So, but Ken, my, my, at least from what Mr. Booth has told us, there is no impending project, right?
That's correct. He doesn't have any intention at this point. He's just trying to get um, access to that back property. And he was hoping to get fifty feet because that would, that would be what would be required to put a road in there.
Makes sense?
Yeah, no, I think I understand.
Cool, okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. Sorry, we sort of.
That's okay.
Tree a curveball.
That's alright.
But feel free to reach out to us if, if you have any further questions or concerns.
Yeah.
So certainly watch for a, your first um, notice of a project would be through the planning board.
Right.
So just keep an eye on, on their public notice.
And you're an actual a butter to that, right?
So you would definitely get noticed.
Are you a butter?
Well, no, I mean, if nothing's happening to Six Baptist Road, then I'm not gonna butter.
Oh, okay.
Oh yeah, that makes sense, right? Yeah.
But crazy, the right of tax didn't create these dollars.
It's at Seven Hackleboro?
Yeah.
Um, twelve years.
Okay, yeah, so, so did you get a notice of a project like in twenty, I don't know, maybe seventeen or eighteen, somewhere there?
No, you mean for the, for the, for the road access?
Correct.
Now, my memory researching.
Yeah.
This when I came up with Mr. Booth a while ago. So he, he said that, well, doesn't matter what he said, but I, I asked the Department of Transportation because that's public record. And he never completed that application. I guess they determined that it was, you know, not enough visibility.
That's our understanding as well.
The law had actually changed about the state highway or something like that. Um, but no, I was never alerted to it.
Interesting. So I would say definitely keep an eye on your own.
Yeah.
Uh, for public notices, is that right?
And the planning board.
Meets here.
Meets here.
When they meet.
It would make the determination whether it's in the interests of the planning board to make a swap of that land which belongs to.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, and if I gave that impression, that's incorrect. We decide if that's in the town's best interest on our land swap. Any future project that Mr. Booth might propose would go before the planning board. Unless it's, Ken, feel free to hop in here. If he put a single house in there, that would not go before the planning board, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
And, and I'm sure your concern is of development. That would certainly go before the planning board.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care, see you guys. Thank you, you too.
Donna, get in touch with you about the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, anything else on that?
Nope, I think that's it. Uh, I'll get ahold of Lenny and we'll see what we can do.
Sounds good. Um, I'm gonna just go back to signing and we'll make our way down through that part, okay?
Yep.
I think we may be setting a record here for stuff to sign. So this looks like.
You brought a good pen tonight.
Yeah, house payable manifest in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Still moved.
I'll second, all those in favor? Aye?
What was the number again, please, Ken?
Thirty-nine, eight, seven, zero, and eighty-nine cents.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
There's that. Um, Calvin, if you want to look at like detail, um, typically, when's the best time to look at, at stuff like that? Monday day?
Yeah, yeah, anytime.
And see, you were Mary?
Yeah, Monday afternoons went a little, like that, um, we were pretty swamped today, so we didn't have that written until like four o'clock, but.
Yeah, but if you wanted to like look at detail before signing, yeah, so. Alright, next is a check for Al Adelstein in the amount of one hundred forty dollars, it looks like. Gas and mileage count.
It's a mileage reimbursement that he gets.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and he doesn't sign that check because it's a check for him, so he's asking for you to sign it.
I understand, okay, so I'm gonna sign that. Yeah.
Um, and Mary is getting in contact with TD Bank to get you's ability to sign. But the way they do it means that we'd have to have everybody sign it, so we have to have all three of you and Greg Heath and Al to sign this.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably next meeting.
Alright, that sounds like a plan.
So I can't sign this one?
We don't have to anyway, it doesn't matter that.
But I just, in, in the interest of transparency, I just want you to have the opportunity to look at.
His, going back and forth to TD Bank to make deposits.
And what I'm doing right now is sending a picture of the manifest to Al. Um, because he's got, he comes in on Tuesday to sign all the checks, but he needs proof that the select board actually approved him signing all those checks.
Okay.
So that's what I do with this.
Alright, uh, yeah, we'll pass that over to Cal. Alright, so next it looks like a payroll manifest in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye?
And English. We'll skip the welfare manifest for now unless you wanna, since you don't.
No, cause we're gonna talk about that, we already decided. Which one is that?
I, I've got it in my hands.
Oh, good, okay, so you just gotta hold on to it, cool. Alright, so next is, let's see there, house payment, mileage, payroll, welfare, we're gonna skip for now. Twenty twenty-five pay rates.
Yeah.
So are these just for review and signature?
Yes, so those are all, all the budgets that were calculated and approved on town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, those are the pay rates for each individual person that those bodies have calculated for.
Okay.
So, you just have you sign that.
Yeah, so we don't need a motion, I don't believe.
And they've already approved it.
Right, yeah, the town, the, the town's people.
Yeah, we're just making it painfully clear.
Right.
What person is getting.
Exactly, right.
Is, could, is this, is this person supposed to still be here?
No, didn't say the answer is not.
Um, he's still there because he um, gets retro pay for the time that he did work.
Oh, okay.
So, we wanted to include the, what he was supposed to get.
Okay.
Um, um, there's, I already did the retro pay earlier today, but um, just to also make it painfully clear, that's why he got retro pay.
Correct. Alright, Cal, next I see something from Citizens Bank. Sand Lake Trust Office of the Selectment, it looks like they need an authorized signer.
Yes, we're adding you as an authorized signer, so you need to sign it in two places.
Okay. Alright.
And uh, contact information update is the first page.
Because Citizens is the trustee of that trust, right, but they need, uh, this is appointing Scott the, uh, is the, so that way when.
Citizen, yes. We have to send that letter to them saying please give us the distribution of the interest.
Right.
Please help us sign it.
Okay. More about trust now than I, I ever thought I would know in this life.
Alright, uh, and so who signs down here?
That, I think Ken needs to sign it.
Okay, alright.
So he's gonna, that's why I didn't.
Okay, do I leave you on with this?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, that's the annual due diligence, is trustee of the trust? Yeah, but. And the motor vehicle junkyard license renewal.
Ken, do you wanna say anything about the junkyard license renewal?
Uh, no. Uh, it's just, uh, we really don't have any, um, we don't have an inspection. The state uh, inspects the junkyards. Basically, all we're doing is saying to the owner that they're certifying, that they're abiding by the state rules. They sign it, then you sign it after that.
Okay, so no motion, just signatures, right?
That's correct, yeah.
You need it?
No, I always put it spare. I just gotta find it. I always put two, just in case.
We usually borrow some stuff.
Yeah.
This is only gonna count halfway.
I know, I, I could have gone, just so nobody questions it. Alright, I'll redo that. Alright, we have some appointment slips. Kathleen Doherty, Assistant Moderator for two years.
Do you get to weigh in on that?
I don't know.
Ken, are we okay with this? It's an unpaid position, so.
Already said she's not interested in it.
Don't, she was very clear on that.
Well, that's too bad.
Well, I'm sorry, we're also losing her time.
Well, yeah, really.
Who I think does an amazing job. Yeah, we'll work on that. Alright, next one is appointing Steve Rasha to the Solid Waste Committee for a two-year period, excuse me, for a three-year period.
Reappoint, right, he's okay.
Reappoint, correct.
Okay, yeah.
Two years ago?
We're gonna find out. No, I think longer than that, it's been quite a long time.
Solid Waste Committee, no, that's been. Yeah. They've got minutes, uh, look back, I was reading a minute.
Actually, Cal's researching, uh, some information from me related to that.
Oh, good, yeah. I've got the questions, let me see.
Yeah.
I'll wait to see what your questions were.
Alright, uh, Citizens and Sam, thank you for that. There you go, Cal. Alright, motor vehicle appointment slips are done. Alright, veterans.
That's it, just two?
I'm sorry.
Just two appointments left?
That's correct, just two appointments, yeah. Alright, so this is a, uh, Cal, this is the veteran's exemption, correct?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
And that's been all vetted.
Yes, the, um, whole thing is from Mandy, so.
Oh yeah, I'm not people. Yeah, very good.
Does that need all of our?
Yes, I believe it needs all of ours, right?
I think there's enough bases.
There's enough, there's multiple lines.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure all of those are requiring all three.
I think she would've written my name on it.
Yes.
We should've put a laptop like there, so Ken's face could be like next to you where he usually is.
It feels weird sitting in this seat, I should be two feet that way.
It is funny how we all get used to uh, abnormal places, if you will. Alright, I think that's.
We got town meeting, Kathy, Kathy came up and said, hey, get out of my seat, geez, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I'm writing Scott Doherty is my name, really, come on. I'll be seeing what you do. You better not stop over.
Yeah.
I hope they didn't invalidate the whole thing, but.
Thank you. Alright, next is a current use application from Louis Aldette of one forty New Road. He's enrolling nine point two acres into current use.
New Road?
New Road.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's been approved by me.
Yeah.
They lost that a little bit of this stuff that came out of the door. Just one place, right, yes.
Yes, yeah, looks like just one place. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, next is a, um, abatement for timber tax. And I'll let you each read through it. It is for Rich, uh, and Lisa Marku. Ninety-two Baptist Hill Road, for map two-two-nine, lot fourteen. And um, I know there's been some back and forth with Mandy over the correct amount. Um, so it, it seems like they have arrived at an amount that is acceptable to Mandy and acceptable to Rich and Lisa. So the documentation is all here, if you wanna look.
I see both those people have gone over, there's a couple of blue things, I'm assuming you have to sign in a couple of places.
Thank you for catching me.
The town budget line is for little blue sticky notes.
I can tell you which line they're part of.
Alright, I think that's here. I think that's actually, other than what you grabbed, the last one that you signed for now. Actually, I'll give you that as well.
Can I have the booth folder back as well?
Sorry. Didn't need to put hand in front.
No, no, that's fine.
What's the normal timber tax, ten percent?
It's supposed to be ten percent, that's correct.
And that's off the gross income and net income?
Ken, do you remember?
Yeah, that's off the gross.
Yeah, but Mandy really is our resident expert.
I'm not familiar with timber tax.
Me neither.
For the stump joint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible to get a copy of this letter, just so I can understand what his concerns were and how we figured it out?
Of course.
Okay. Explains, explains it well. Can I just get that from Mandy?
Sure. Take it off my list.
Okay. Anything you can think of?
Yeah. Uh, what do we need two minutes next? Alright, what do we need to minutes next?
Uh that'll be in the blue folder.
Thank you, yeah, sure it is. Thank you, I'll give that back to you. Alright, so moving on, let's start with the executive session of, and actually Calvin, you won't be able, since you weren't here.
Right.
Um so Beth, for you and I.
I read them on the second meeting, they're fine.
Yeah, I did. Okay, so I'll move the minutes.
Oh, this is the executive session, yes.
This, yes, that's correct, this is the executive session of February the eighteenth.
Yes, I uh second.
Okay, all those in favor, alright? abstain? That would be you. And did you, you didn't give Calvin a copy?
I did.
Okay, so typically, the executive session minutes will have your name on them, and we turn those back in
Yeah, and I actually won't know.
when we approve them, so they remain private.
Okay.
These, however, will become public and our public.
And we can keep ours.
That is correct, yeah, exactly right.
Yes.
Alright, so turning our attention to the draft minutes from March third, twenty twenty-five.
I didn't see anything in those either.
Neither, you're not, right?
Ready, alright.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, abstain? Alright, so we have that. I'm gonna get really copy and turn that back into it.
Okay.
This is also one of our shorter pages of minutes.
It is, yeah.
That's cuz you had to.
We were racing to get out of here to the five five apartment.
We had to do it, so why don't we, um.
So if you wanna talk about the committees?
Purchased, okay, I'm sorry, the.
I'm sorry, um the decide how many representatives for boards and committees, or do you wanna switch to the?
Yes, actually, what I thought we would do is the offer to purchase town owned property.
Okay.
And then we can talk about, um, yeah.
Um you have, the offer is in in there.
New business?
Um and the offer letter is on top, and then there's the property method card, and I accidentally printed out two maps, so got two.
Okay. Alright, not too many. Alright, so this is, and and you won't be able to look at this, actually, why don't you do this? Both of you. So this is an offer from Brian McGoom, who is offering a hundred twenty thousand dollars to the town of Canterbury for the sale of the property with map, map two-two-six lot two. The tax card values the property at a hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I would have to get financing for this purchase, I've approved, so I would like to have some time to get that set up.
What road is, where are we, or was that?
One oh six.
Yeah, it's one oh six.
Oh, oh.
Ken, can you fill in some of the?
Yeah, so, so this is property over uh by the racetrack, um that was given to the town. The people that owned it didn't want it anymore, they didn't wanna pay taxes, they offered it to the racetrack, the racetrack didn't want it. Um Beth, I think you might remember the community power went over and looked at it for the potential of putting solar panels on it. And because of the terrain, they didn't feel it was worth doing anything with. I, I, I can't remember if it's commercial, uh I think it's commercial zoned. Um but that's, that's the piece of land it is, would be on the east side of Route one oh six. Right next to where they're building the um, the new uh self-storage, the big self-storage place over there.
And Ken, did, did Brian say how long he thought it might take to put the financing together?
He did not, he did not, he, he said uh, he's looking for some space, I think for his trucks and everything. And um I think, you know, uh I mean, he's been in business for a while, I don't know what his financial situation is, but he said he would, you know, if, if the town was open to this, then he would go right away and and get financing for it.
Okay.
Rowan Tapo somewhat areas.
Hmm, yeah, it's a little swampy in that places.
So he's, well, I don't know if it matters or not, but he's gonna strip it to put store equipment on? Just lock, just clear it, or don't we know?
I don't know, I, that, that would be my guess, that he's looking for someplace to put his, his trucks and his equipment on.
That's right along one of six in a pretty industrial area anyway.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, um so what do we need to do to?
So we need to decide if we wanna accept this offer, and what period of time we want to do that.
Okay, can I see the offer letter?
Of course.
Yeah, cuz I was looking at the map and it's hard to say what's listing.
No worries. That's all right.
You know, a loan, forty-five to sixty days.
That's what I'm, yeah, yeah, so fifty, you know, that seems pretty reasonable to me.
Yeah. So he's, he's gotta, he's gotta get a loan for the difference?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
No, not for the difference now, that's our value on the property.
Oh, and he's offering that?
Correct.
Oh, okay, how long have we had it?
Not that long.
It said on the thing, it was uh the tax card in twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I believe, Ken, correctly or wrong, the owner of the property died, and the family that was left did not want the property.
That's correct, that's correct.
Or nineteen, what's HJR, what's SMRL, is that?
Do we know how to, there's the listing history, but how do we determine?
No idea.
Ken, SMRL for the listing history?
I'm not sure.
In twenty thirteen, it went to HJRL, and twenty twenty-three to MI, it's MI.
Uh.
I mean, that it's, the, the town owns it.
Yeah, the town, like I said, I think um the, the people that owned it, uh the, the person who owned it passed away and the family didn't want it. And um, we ended up, we ended up taking it, um or, you know, they, they gave it to us. Um the Conservation Commission wasn't interested in it, didn't pose any real value to them. And then uh the Community Power looked at it, and it wasn't any value to them, so um it's just a piece of property over there that, that we've owned um for a few years. We, again, we haven't owned it that long, um.
Right, I, I think I was on the select board, Ken.
Yeah, I, I think you were, Scott, yeah, yeah.
Probably twenty twenty-three, I guess, um that it was gifted to the town, so.
So in effect, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the town for a gift is pretty good exchange, Brian's a good local resident, he has a good business.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, about the tax rule is better than no taxes, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty much been our policy, certainly, helping out, I think it just makes sense.
So do we just, do we vote, or do we?
So um, I, I think yes, right, Ken, we have to vote?
Yes, yeah.
So uh how about I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept Brian McGoom's offer for a hundred twenty thousand for uh tax map two-two-six lot two, and that we give him, Ken, do you think ninety days is a reasonable period of time?
I would think so, I would think so.
For Brian to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make that motion with a ninety day window uh for purchase.
Seconded.
All those in favor, alright, alright? Thank you. And then we have one last piece of public business, right? The committees?
Yes, yep, that, that would be the last public.
Yeah.
Um so this is all hard to read, it's the list of all the committees and departments.
Yeah.
And I wrote down what you guys decided on last year for who would be what.
Yeah.
So if you just fill it in for a couple of times.
Perfect, and you've circled, okay.
Do you wanna, do we wanna think, do we have to think about it, or do you?
I, I think we do, um.
Yeah, I, I like.
So.
Could you pick one for planning board?
Actually, that's what I was just gonna say, is I'm gonna do planning board tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and Nate take that.
Okay.
Cuz I, I am aware of that, Cal.
Okay.
Um so I'll, I'll put myself in for that. Um and what I'm gonna ask is, um I, I think, Ken, the last, when we did this last year, I asked the other select board members to email me directly and no one else.
Yes, yeah.
One.
Correct, for what you want for committees. So my suggestion is, yeah, take a picture of it, and then just shoot me an email. And um Ken, is Calvin's email working now for the town?
Pardon me again?
Calvin's email is working for the town, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, from the ZBA, actually.
Yeah, same.
Yeah. And Ken, a, a question, as long as we're still in public session, is can Calvin serve on the ZBA as well as the select board?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we already took you off the rolls and stuff.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, uh well, you know, um, no, not the ZBA, no, no, because uh um you guys are an appeal to the ZBA, you're in that chain, so you cannot. A member from the planning board, one member from the planning board can be on both the planning board and the ZBA, but the selectman can't be on the ZBA.
Okay, so and it sounds like you guys have taken care of that already.
Yeah, and um it's on the agenda for the next ZBA meeting.
They're gonna need alternates, cuz I think me leaving leaves that.
Yeah, well, it depends on if Brendan O'Donnell, Brendan's a lot where he can be on both.
Yeah, yeah.
But does he want to still be on both?
I think it could only be an alternate, as we discussed last year.
Well, he is on, he is on, he is the alt, an alternate for the ZBA, but full on planning board.
Right, cuz when we, when we talked about it last year, you could alternate for both, but the discussion was, I don't think you can be a seated member and then alternate on the other board.
Uh.
I, I could be wrong, but that was the discussion last year when we were trying to fill that spot on the ZBA.
I mean.
Bodies or bodies?
Yeah, he probably doesn't have time for it anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that'll be a good discussion we could have.
And then HMH, we can weigh in on that.
Jesse?
Yes.
Scott?
Nice to meet you, Scott.
Good to meet you finally, face to face.
Yes, this is my wife Melanie.
How are you, um have a seat for right now, we are literally at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
What we're gonna do is adjourn into a non-public session, and we'll talk.
Sure. Perfect.
Right there, just obviously close the door and. Thank you, alright, so you guys got this, Cal, do you want me to run onto this, or do you want me to?
I'll run it.
Uh, I think it's right.
Okay, take it.
Conservation Commission.
I guess it's kind of.
I'm, I'm gonna take a picture.
They all, they all in daytime, when I can think of, it's like solid waste company, they need to like.
Alright, that's back at you, I already did put myself in for planning.
Yeah.
Um.
And you have any questions today, I'll put those on website if you're.
Um.
Yeah.
Did I mean, do you have, is it your session plan?
Yes, I, oh, you could, okay, no, I think you gave it to me.
Did I make you?
Just gotta find it now in the pile of papers, or.
I'd love to fill it out as I go along.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
But you can be off.
Yeah, that, that was my plan, and of course, like other plans.
Did we?
You didn't really talk about the.
I brought a bunch of extras, okay?
Yeah, let's do an extra, that's probably the most expeditions I ever.
We, we turn our color cards over.
Alright, and what we just signed, um A and C, is my memory?
No, the ones can't keep up these like good sessions.
Yes, um, there's gonna be three topics, one, actually, two of them.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Yes, you will.
Could affect reputation, one of them is a personal matter, actually, two of them could be a personal matter, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, alright, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn into executive session per RSA ninety-one A three two A and RSA ninety-one A three two C. Looking for a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright? Thank you, Edgar.
Thank you, Edgar, alright, so if you could just give me a minute to.
Of course.
And actually.
Ken?